City Commission Meeting, we're going to open with a prayer from Pastor Haywood Miller of the Living Word Church, followed by the pledge led by General McQueen. Please rise.
First of all, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for the honor to open your prayer today. Father, your word says how good and how pleasant it is for men and women to flow together in unity. Father, I thank you for our community of Panama City. Father, I thank you how we are recovering. Father, I thank you how we are building. I thank you how we are progressing, Lord, and we're asking, Lord, today that you will lead and guide, Lord, our officials, our government officials who need your discernment, need your wisdom, need your guidance, as we move Panama City forward in completing what is in your heart, what is in your mind, and what is in your will. So, Lord, we pray for Panama City. We pray for Bay County. We pray for these officials to have the wisdom they need, the discernment they need, the guidance they need, that we may progress and do your will. And we thank you for it, in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jan, would you call the roll, please, ma'am?
Mayor Bernicki.
Here.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Mayor, you have form.
Very good. We've got the minutes from the March 22 meeting. Anyone receive those in their packet? Any additions or deletions on this, on these minutes, or do I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the minutes from the City Commission Meeting, March 22, '22.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
We also had a meeting on March 30th. Same questions. Any additions or deletions, something there that's, or not there that should be? If not, entertain a motion to accept the minutes from March 30th as presented.
Yes, I'll move approval of that, too, March 30.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
General McQueen, is there any additions or deletions to the, modifications to the?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're going down for this one, too?
Yeah, yeah. I think that... Good morning, good morning, good morning, everybody. Florida's bright future depends on the healthy development of its children. The abuse and neglect of children can cause severe and costly consequences for children, families, and society as a whole. Every child has the right to a safe, healthy, and happy childhood where they are educationally and developmentally on track. Studies have shown that parents and caregivers who have support systems and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. It is a vital, it is vital that individuals, businesses, schools, and community organizations make children a top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. During the month of April, the Early Learning Coalition of Northwest Florida, in collaboration with the City of Panama City Mayor's Office, the Salvation Army, the Gulf Coast Children's Advocacy Center, the Alance of Prevention Fund of Florida, Implement Pin Wheels for Prevention. The blue and silver pinwheel displays in this campaign are used to symbolize the health and happiness that all children deserve. Child Abuse Prevention Month is an important opportunity to encourage all citizens and visitors to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities and that provide the optimal environment for healthy child development. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bernicki, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Panama City, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 2022 Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Panama City, and I urge all citizens, businesses, and social institutions to join us, nurturing children and supporting families. Thank you. Paul?
On behalf of Chief Smith and the many women of the Panama City Police Department, we'd like to express our thanks for the work that you do each and every day in support of the children and families in our community. We couldn't do our jobs in those investigations without you, without that partnership of all these years, and we're so appreciative for that. And on behalf of us, we would like to give you this check today to go towards your work in our community.
In this fast-paced world where we're always, and it's so fashionable now, to text instead of calling people because you don't know if you can get them on the phone or not. You want to leave them a message, and then you don't know if they're going to check the messages. But you know, there are a group of ladies that work for the City of Panama City that, when you call them, they answer every time. And buddy, let me tell you, that is important because when we're calling them, it's not about finding out what time supper is. It's something important. So, today, I'd like you all to come up here. We're going to honor you. Professional telecommunications perform a critical function when an emergency occurs requiring police, fire, or ambulance, as well as those related to forestry and conservation operations, highway safety, rail, air traffic, plus other services that affect the health and safety of our citizens. Thousands of dedicated telecommunications daily serve the citizens of the United States by answering their calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services, and by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. Professional telecommunications are critical to our city's emergency response and homeland security services, dispatching law enforcement, firefighters, emergency medical services, and other emergency responders 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Last year, our telecommunications received 101,708 calls. They dispatched 65,461 calls for police service, as well as completed 277,623 entries and transactions. Professional telecommunications are not visible because they are the men and women who arrive on the scene of emergencies, but provide the vital link to public safety services as part of the first responder team. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bernicki, by the virtue of the authority vested in me, as the mayor of the City of Panama City, do hereby proclaim April 10 through the 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week throughout the City of Panama City. We honor them for a week, but they do it 365, 24/7, in honor and recognition of our telecommunications and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens. Congratulations. Last week, if you all didn't see the news, we got summoned, or I got summoned, to go to Indian Pass on a beautiful day on Friday afternoon. And in between having oysters with the governor, he, he gave me this check. And so, we received a little short of another million dollars from the state of Florida. Now, what this money is for is we have a Robinson-Bio wastewater treatment project. We were granted 75 percent. The state was responsible for 12 and a half percent. The city was responsible for 12 and a half percent. Well, the state paid our 12 and a half percent, so it's not going to come out of anybody's pocket that's here or in the City of Panama City. Just another million dollars that we can use someplace else. Just thought I would bring that up. Thanks. Okay, the other announcements, the Panama City Port Authority has two positions for four-year terms that expire on June 27, 2026. Please be advised that the current members, Mr. Don Crisp and Mr. Harvey Hollingsworth, wish to remain on the board. If you are interested in putting in an application, send it to Jan at the City of Panama City. The Panama City Port Authority...
It's a big one for the, for the airport.
We got the airport authority.
Yeah.
Okay. Bay County Airport Authority has one position for a four-year term that expires on June 30, 2026. Please be advised, the current member, Mr. Glenn McDonald, wishes to remain on the board. If you are interested, contact Jan at the city. Community event announcements. Tuesday, March 29, the City of Panama City, in partnership with Palmetto Paint PC, had held a teen night out at Frank Nelson Clubhouse. The next teen paint night takes place April 26, this time at Panama City Center of the Arts. Parents who are encouraged to participate with your child. The Panama City Center for the Arts held a ribbon cutting for several new exhibits in the Main and Miller and Cafe Art Galleries, April 1. Also on the agenda that evening was the unveiling of their newest permanent public art installation, Transformation, created by local glass artist Dr. Marlene East. Backed by popular demand, Quality of Life is bringing our youth tennis camp to Oakland Terrace, Thursdays beginning April 7 until May 19. Instruction runs, instruction runs from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. and is open to all youth ages 7 to 13. Bring the kids out to Oakland Terrace, April 16, from 9 to 11, for some family fun at the annual Crew of St. Andrews Easter Egg Hunt. There will be games, face painting, arts and crafts, and ice cream sandwiches, and kids look for the golden eggs to win a special prize.
All right.
Now, Billy, you can't have that. Panama City is teaming up with Legacy Arborist Services to host a free tree care workshop and giveaway on National Arbor Day from April 29, from 9 to noon, out at the Oakland Terrace Clubhouse. This free three-hour tree care workshop covers a wide range of topics, from protecting tree roots to tree planting and tree pruning. In exchange for your attendance in this relevant and informative workshop, each participant will receive a free seven-gallon winged elm. You must register at PCgov.org for this event. On Saturday, May 21, join us at Carl Gray Park, located at Collegiate Drive in Panama City, and enjoy live music, food trucks, and food, and fun at the inaugural Test Strong Food Truck Festival. There is no entry fee for this event. 10% of all vendor proceeds go to benefit Mothers Against Drunk Driving at Northwest Florida. In May of 2021, Tess Rowland, Panama City WMBB News 13 anchor, was severely injured when she was hit head-on by a drunk driver while traveling to work at around 2:45 in the morning. Almost a year later, Tess is still recovering. Since that time, Tess has made it her mission to combat impaired and drunk driving. Welcome to the Year of the Tiger. DAD, SRA, Panhandle, and Panama City Quality of Life are excited to announce the inaugural Asian American Pacific Islander Festival. Discover Asia Downtown at McKenzie Park, May 21, from 3 to 8 p.m. Explore Asian and Pacific Island culture with an evening filled with art and crafts, arts and crafts, music and dance, plants, and exotic cuisine. This fun-filled virtual day trip to the Orient is something the whole family is sure to love. Lots going on. Okay, next, we have audience participation. We've got one person that has signed up. Mr. Bostic, if you'd come forward.
Tony Bostic, 159 North Camarada Avenue. Good morning, Commissioners, Mayors. With the consideration of ordinance 3059, I just want to take a moment to thank Commissioner Street and Commissioner Halagus. I wrote a response to that after your first meeting, and they were the only two that took the time, or had the time, or made it a point to at least email me, call me, or text me and say, "Well, thank you." Not that they agreed with it, not that they supported it, but just out of due diligence as Commissioners. They took that time, and I say thank you to you two. And on that tip, which you all are about to discuss, that final reading, I hope that you have, you at least took some of what I said and thought about it. Because, as I said in there, everything that you're addressing in 3059 is already an ordinance, either with the City of Panama City, Bay County, it's a Florida statute, or it's a federal statute. The problem that you have before you is that you don't have, as a Panama City ordinance, you don't have the teeth in it to make it enforceable. Our Police Department here in Panama City does an outstanding job, but there are only enforcers of the law. If you don't write the law so that they can enforce it, then their hands are tied. The most egregious example of that is in your occupancy orders. The fire chief, his hands are really tied until after the first occurrence. And it only takes one time for someone to get trampled in a stampede coming out of one of these clubs that's over capacity, or get killed outside in a melee that goes on. And then everybody's going to look at the police chief, they're going to look at you as Commissioners, they're going to look at the mayor, they're going to look at the city manager and say, "Why didn't you do something?" Well, if you have ordinances and you have rules in place, put some teeth in them so that the guys that you put your trust in, and the guys that, as the mayor just talked about, all of those phone calls were answered by our telecommunications here in Panama City. Give them something to work with. You don't need a new ordinance. It's kind of like the tax code. 15,000 pages, and it only needs a little common sense applied. Give them something to work with. Help them to make us safer. Help them to make Panama City a better city. I don't have a business in Panama City, but I spend my money in Panama City. I don't live in Panama City, but I have family and friends here and business associates. And while I don't go to the club and I don't drink out there, I still think it should be fair across the board. Thank you.
I will say that he did a tremendous amount of work to try to give us some input on some changes. Tony, thank you for all that work. You put a lot of work into that.
Yeah, and next time, Tony, it's on the agenda, so you can address us during that, but you won't have to do it again now. But thank you. We do appreciate it. What's... Well, you didn't sign up, but go ahead.
Jerome McDougall, 907 East 10th Street, Panama City, Florida. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me come up and speak. What I wanted to ask, I wanted to find out some information about the St. Bernard project. I was trying to find out what was going on, what was the, like, the holdup. I'm on that building, the houses, and I was just trying to find out what was the holdup on it because I hadn't heard any information. I tried to get in contact with Mr. Johnson, but I understand he's busy. So, I was just trying to find out if anybody could give me some information about that.
Jared, can you get him information about St. Bernard?
Yes, sir. I can, I can follow up with you after the meeting, or if you'd like to meet me out in the lobby, I can do that now, if you'd like.
Can I meet you right now because I do have to go to work and everything?
Right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
He can call you if you just get your number. All right, go ahead.
They, they got it.
All right, if there isn't anybody else, we'll go on. Nevin?
First item on the agenda is a final reading of ordinance 3052, Adoption of Purchasing Policy by Ordinance. What you have in your pack is the same letter that, and that had been provided at the last meeting. Nothing has changed. This is a cleanup item. When the City Commission adopted the purchasing policy by resolution, we found that there were some ordinances that needed to be repealed to allow the City Commission to continue just making amendments by resolution. So, the effect is it's recommended, it's repealing prior ordinances that are in conflict with the purchasing policy manual that was adopted, and then ratifies the previously adopted purchasing policy.
Here, here a motion on ordinance 3052.
Move approval, Mayor. Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Getting ready for the next one. Ordinance 3052, an ordinance of the City of Panama City, Florida, mending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Financial Affairs, confirming Resolution 2021 101 12.2, which adopted the City of Panama City Purchasing Policy and Procedures Manual, repealing Ordinance 1528, Ordinance 1748, Ordinance 1870, and Ordinance 2732, providing for amendment of Chapter 2, providing for severability, codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing for an immediate effective date. The next item is to, is a final hearing, but I believe Commissioner, City Manager Mark McQueen will address this, but it is a, the ordinance that is unchanged from what you considered at a special meeting on, I believe it was on March 29, or maybe March 30. Okay. It's late night, ordinance 3059, and I think Mr. McQueen liked to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. And Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to report back to you that, you know, the first reading of the ordinance was considered, and we, subsequent to that meeting, we had a, a meeting with each of the establishment owners and had a dialogue with them. I thank the mayor and his leadership with regard to engaging these business owners. And with that, my recommendation is, we are still crafting language and modifying language that is in this proposed ordinance, and at this time, it's not ready for your consideration. With that, it's my intent to bring forward to you at the meeting on the 26th of April, a recommendation regarding the late night ordinance 3059. With that, Mr. Mayor, is there anything you'd like to add with regard to the meeting that we had?
No, I think there was...
I think we need to have certainly a public hearing.
Yeah, there was some really good discussion with these former owners, and we were really trying to get to the crux of the problem, and I think that there's some things that we need to do to tweak what we talked about the other day. And unless there's anyone in the public that would like to come up and address it, I mean, Tony has already done that, so, you know, if there isn't anybody else, I'd entertain a motion to suspend the vote until we get this fixed.
To the date certain, which would be the 26th of April, at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Is it fair to ask that Mr. McQueen and Mayor, that this, there will be tweaks made? We won't be voting on this exact thing.
That's correct.
So, I want everybody to understand it, and Mr. Bostic, with all due respect, so we won't be voting on this same thing, so that you understand, you know, because I did get your email, and I did read it, and I want to thank you for that, you know. Sorry I didn't reply back, but I did read it and thoroughly examined it. But we're not going to vote on this again. We're just going to be tweaked, so.
Your motion?
We're very aware. I'll make that motion.
Yes?
I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
A motion to defer to April 26 passes five zero.
Okay, we've got six items on the consent agenda. Does anyone want to discuss any of those separately? If not, entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I'll second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
McQueen?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, it's a privilege to bring before you several of these items on the agenda. I, building on what the mayor shared in his comments about the check that was presented to him by Governor DeSantis, I want to thank publicly Governor DeSantis, the Director Eagle, who is the Director for the Department of Economic Opportunity, Director Guthrie, who is the Director for the Department of Emergency Management, that have done, have been doing amazing things to help this community and its recovery. And to that end, what I'm about to share with you is nearly $28 million worth of budget resolutions based on grants and subrecipient agreements that will help this community continue to recover post Hurricane Michael. So, with that, I would like to draw your attention to item 9A, which is the consideration to enter into the subrecipient agreement with DEO. agreement with DEO for the Hometown Revitalization Program Business Facade and Improvement Project and Budget Resolution Number two zero two two zero four one two point one. As background information, on August fourth, twenty twenty-one, the City of Panama City was awarded one point one million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents for the St. Andrews area business facade and building improvement project through the Department of Economic Opportunity, Hometown Revitalization Program. The grant is to be used for businesses in the St. Andrews area to renovate the facade of their buildings that have been damaged by Hurricane Michael, and the execution of the subrecipient agreement is required in order to begin the program implementation. With that, it's my recommendation that we move forward with the acceptance of the subrecipient agreement and the approval of the adjoining budget amendment resolution.
Your motion?
I'll move a motion to accept.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Any discussion?
Yes. How, how is it determined as to how that money, how much goes to each? Or is it just a matter of however long it lasts, or is there, is there a cap on it per business?
So, yes, sir. So the Hometown Revitalization Program was a, is a, this is the first time the DEO has ever done this program, in that there were efforts to reach out to all of the businesses along each of the major corridors that you'll see in this, and businesses petitioned, submitted an application of what they thought they might need with regard to that. All of that was bundled and submitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity. They made an award determination on that. Now we're, the subrecipient agreement allows us to start executing those dollars. Part of that is that we need to come up and craft what the implementation instructions are, and working with DEO on how to allocate these dollars to each of the businesses as a result.
So in other words, we don't know. We're working on it.
Yeah, there's no cap.
Well, no, there's no, there's, well, there's, there's not a cap, but it's not more than, no one business will get the full amount.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Distributed out. There were different numbers of businesses in each of the different wards that applied. We had our Hagerty consultants going literally door to door, trying to get everybody to apply back in the summer of last year.
But, but this is earmarked for, for the St. Andrews area?
This one is.
Yes.
And the state has made the determination of who will get what, not us.
Okay, okay. That's, that's DEO.
All right.
Thank you.
Based on their application.
Any other discussion?
Nope, that's it.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted Resolution twenty twenty-two oh four one two point one, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget to use the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Hometown Revitalization Program for St. Andrews area business facade and building improvements project.
Item nine B is the consideration to enter into a subrecipient agreement with DEO for the Hometown Revitalization Program Business Facade and Improvement Project and Budget Resolution Number two zero two two zero four one two point two. As background information, on August fourth, twenty twenty-one, the City of Panama City was awarded four million, four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents for the Glenwood Panama City Business Facade Building and Improvement Project through the Department of Economic Opportunity, Hometown Revitalization Program. The grant is to be used for businesses on Martin Luther King Boulevard and the Glenwood area to renovate the facade of their buildings that have been damaged by Hurricane Michael. The execution of the subrecipient agreement is required to begin the program implementation, and as such, my recommendation is that we accept the subrecipient agreement and approval of the budget amendment resolution.
Your motion on nine B?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have the opportunity?
You do it, Ken.
To say, it's about time.
You make the motion, Mr. Brown.
It's about time. I'm on my way. I'm on my way.
Come on my way.
Okay.
Thank you, Jesus. That's all I can say.
All right.
Amen.
And I believe Josh is...
Yeah, I've got, so I'll, I'll be abstaining from this one, so I have a minority interest in one of the businesses that are listed in this subrecipient agreement. Took place before my time here on the commission, so I'll just be removing myself from voting here.
Call the roll.
Is there a second?
Oh.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what. I've removed my motion, because I want Mr. Brown to be able, Commissioner Brown to make that motion.
Say your second.
And I'll, I'm gonna say it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Street is abstained. Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes four to, four, and with one abstention.
And Billy, on this, it's good that Josh will be hands-on with that, because he'll be able to help this new process that we don't know, you know, be able to have a hand in it.
Trust me, I've got plenty of experience working with the headaches of grant processes.
The, the commission has adopted Resolution twenty twenty-two oh four one two point two, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget to use the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Hometown Revitalization Program for Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and the Glenwood area business facade and building improvements project.
Item nine C is a consideration to enter into the subrecipient agreement with DEO for the Hometown Revitalization Program Business Facade and Improvement Project and build, and budget resolution Number two zero two two zero four one two point three. As background information, on August fourth, twenty twenty-one, the City of Panama City was awarded one million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty cents for the Millville area business facade and building improvement project through the Department of Economic Opportunity, the Hometown Revitalization Program. Grant was to be used for businesses in the Millville area to renovate the facade of their buildings that have been damaged by Hurricane Michael. Execution of the subrecipient agreement is required in order to begin the program implementation. As such, it's my recommendation that we accept the subrecipient agreement and the adjoining budget amendment resolution.
Motion on nine C?
No, I will. I move a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted Resolution twenty twenty-two oh four one two point three, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget to use the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Hometown Revitalization Program for the Millville area businesses facade and building improvements project.
Item ninety is consideration to approve a budget amendment resolution Number two zero two two zero four one two point five, to account for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Rebuild Florida General Infrastructure Repair Program for Project Restore, specifically Area A two. As background information, this subrecipient agreement, M zero one one six, in the amount of twenty million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars, was accepted by the City Commission on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and this is the budget, this is for budget purposes only to do the adjoining budget amendment resolution. With that, my recommendation is that we approve the budget amendment resolution two zero two two zero four one two point five, in the amount of twenty million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Motion on nine D? I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it, but I want to ask a question. What is Area A two exactly?
Area A two is one of the roughly thirty areas that are part of our state revolving fund areas that we have identified as critical infrastructure that needs to be restored. This is in Area A two, is over in St. Andrews, near the college between Michigan and near the Turtle Lake Apartments space, north to Twenty-third Street.
Close to the park, right near the park, too.
It will be.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Clearing that up.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has approved Resolution twenty twenty-two oh four one two point five, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget to use the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Rebuild Florida General Infrastructure Repair Program for Project Restore Area Two, A two.
On item nine E, I'd like to also acknowledge and thank Representative Trumbull and Senator Gainer for their legislative work in the last legislative session, which addressed the critical need within the City of Panama City, and that's the nexus and the genesis of this request. And number nine, in nine E, it's the consideration to approve and sign the standard grant agreement, LPA zero two zero four, which is relocating the sanitary sewer line to transport flow towards lift station number sixteen, which is in the St. Andrews community, between the City of Panama City and Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the amount of three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As background information, lift station number sixteen, which is located on Drummond Avenue in the City of Panama City, is slated for relocation and will be funded under a separate HMGP grant. The supporting sanitary sewer lines and manholes connected to lift station number sixteen are underwater in the St. Andrews Bay, compromising both functionality and sustainability, as well as impacting our environment. This associated infrastructure to be moved will be aligned with the lift station's new location, ensuring the improved service, as well as decreasing potential negative environmental impacts. The, this three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant will be used to fund the pre-designed study, the design and permitting, the bidding and contractor selection, the project management, construction, and land acquisition costs associated with relocating the sanitary sewer lines required for lift station number sixteen movement. With that, it's my recommendation that we approve the agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection for the allocation toward lift station number six, in the amount, sixteen, in the amount of three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion on nine E? I'll make the motion.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Definitely.
Motion passes five zero.
That's a big deal.
Getting sewer lines out of the bay.
How they ended up there in the first place, no one really knows.
I think...
That was a big...
Trumbull and, and Gainer for, for doing that for us.
Truly. With that, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Draw your attention to item nine F, which is a consideration to approve the budget amendment resolution two zero two two zero four one two point four, to utilize state forfeiture funds to purchase two twenty-twenty-two Polaris Sportsman four fifty HO EPS ATVs from Dothan Power Sports, a cargo trailer from Le Chalet, camper trailers, and other assorted accessories necessary to complete the apparatus and the vehicles for the total amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. With that, background information is the purchase of the two Polaris ATVs will aid in the agency's crowd control and the movement of officers during specialized patrol operations to include parades, festivals, concerts, and emergency disaster situations. Units will also be used to aid in criminal investigations, the inspection and removal of homeless encampments throughout the city, missing people, and problematic incidents as they arise. With that, it's a recommendation that we approve the expenditure of the state forfeiture funds in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars for the acquisition of these two ATVs and the associated cargo trailer.
Motion on nine F? Move approval.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The commission has adopted Resolution twenty twenty-two oh four one two point four, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget to use state forfeiture funds to purchase two all-terrain vehicles, one enclosed cargo trailer, and miscellaneous accessories to fully equip the ATVs.
Item nine G is consideration of approval of change order number one for the Bollards and Pad Eyes project to the Eastern Shipbuilding Incorporated in the amount of zero dollars in accordance with change order number one. This change order is incorporated into the Triumph Gulf Coast Grant. The City of Panama City entered into a grant award agreement in Triumph Gulf Coast and the Eastern Shipbuilding on August first, twenty nineteen. This grant is to provide funding for the infrastructure improvements, including the plattens, the dredging, bulkhead installation, launchways, equipment, and warehouse facilities on an easement owned by the city. In accordance with the previous agenda item dated January fifth, twenty twenty-two, the city approved contract scope embedded by DRMP and Eastern Shipbuilding Group to provide the installation of the Bollards and the Pad Eyes for five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. This change order is, with ESG, is to provide a payment bond at no additional cost to the City of Panama City. With that, it's my recommendation that we accept the award of change order number one in the amount of zero dollars to Eastern Shipbuilding Group Incorporated.
Motion on nine G?
Move approval, Mayor. One second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Excuse me, yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine H is a consideration of approval of change order number two for the Bollards and Pad Eyes project of Eastern Ship Group, Eastern Shipbuilding Group Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars in accordance with change order number two, approved and recommended by DRMP. This inch, this change order is incorporated into the Triumph Gulf Coast Grant. It's the same information as I shared earlier with you with regard to agenda item number nine G, and with that, my recommendation is that we award change order number two in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars to the Eastern Shipbuilding Group Incorporated.
Motion on nine H? Move approval.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine I is a consideration of change order number four with, for the Finn Stabilizers Dredge Project to Diamond Services Corporation in the amount of three hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. It, as was with the previous two items, they've been reviewed and approved by DRMP. With that, in accordance with the attached DRMP approval of this change order number four for Diamond, to be able to provide the additional dredging scope of work, which has been already completed. With that, it's my recommendation that we move forward and award to Diamond Services Corporation a change order number four in the amount of three hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars.
Motion on nine I?
Move approval, Mayor.
Discussion.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine J is a consideration of ranking of firms for providing debris management and removal services for the City of Panama City. As background information, a request for proposal was advertised by the city to review competitive proposals for the role of debris management and removal services for declared disasters. Eleven proposals for debris management and removal services were received and evaluated by the city's staff selection committee. All proposals were evaluated and met the minimum qualifications in the request for proposal. During the selection process, the following firms were ranked in the following order. Number one was Crowder Gulf, number two Phillips Jordan, number three D and J Enterprises, number four Ashbrit Incorporated. As such, the city staff recommends four contracts for, with Crowder Gulf being the primary contract, and the secondary contracts with number two Phillips and Jordan, number three D and J Enterprises, and number four Ashbrit. All contracts would be for one year in length with four twelve-month operational renewal periods. No funds are required until a contract is tasked to be able to respond to a declared disaster event. With that, my recommendation is we accept the recommendations of the committee and move forward with the award of the contract.
Motion on nine J?
I move approval, Mayor, with nine J.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine K is a consideration of approval of the top two disaster debris monitoring services proposals for RFP PC twenty-two dash zero one eight. As background information, a request for proposal was advertised by the city to review competitive proposals for the role of disaster debris monitoring services for declared disasters. Four proposals for disaster debris monitoring services were received and evaluated by the city's staff selection committee. All proposals were evaluated and met the minimum qualifications outlined in the RFP. The committee selected Tetra Tech as the top choice for the debris monitoring firm based on qualifications, experienced high level of skill set to best execute the RFP scope. City staff recommends awarding the contract with Tetra Tech. The contract would be for one year in length with four twelve-month optional renewals. No funds are required to be paid until a contractor is tasked to respond to a declared disaster event. With that, it's recommendation that we move forward with the award to Tetra Tech.
Motion on nine K?
Walter P. In, six fourteen Maple Avenue. I know y'all missed me last time. I had eye surgery. But we are, I mean, I'm hearing, we're not gonna go through twelve months, then after that, we go give a payment. Why, why can't we know what the payment is now before the twelve months? It can be, it can be ten million dollars.
Say that again. I can't understand you. Say that again, I can't understand you, Mr. Henry.
Why can't we know what are we, these men, we're paying now? Why we got to wait the twelve months?
We're not paying anything.
I know you're not. There's a price there somewhere. It's hidden, like it's hidden to us. It's keeping a secret.
Mr. Henry.
If you made a, if you somebody made a contract with yours, you did have them to make a contract. The contract got a price on it.
We have a guaranteed price.
Correct. Why can't we know what the price is? That's all I'm asking.
He wants to know what the price is, but we wouldn't know.
So we know what the unit price is, we don't know what the.
You know, but do we know?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
No, we don't, because it ain't on this paper, like the rest of them.
He wants to know what the unit price is.
It. Be happy to provide you the detailed breakout for all of these contractors that have submitted their bids. This is a requirement by FEMA that you have to have the contract in place prior to a declared disaster. With the hurricane season that is approaching, it's prudent for the city to do that since our current contract expires as of the thirty-first of May. This is all based on unit price. The amount of volume is dependent upon the extent of the damage that is, that we have to remove. This monitoring service is based on the number of reports that have to be, number of load tickets that have to be validated, the number of loads that are picked up, the number of types of debris that are picked up, whether it's vegetative debris or C and D type of debris. All of that is based on the, the request for proposal. Every one of those prices are public and happy to provide you a copy of those. It's just prudent for the city to go ahead and have that in play before hurricane season begins.
I don't have a problem with that, what you're saying.
Yeah.
Then I have a problem with that. Everything that you got, you got it in writing, what we're paying everybody for everything they're doing. This we do not have, it's no.
It's all online, you can look.
It might be online, everybody don't get online. We need to, you put it on paper here. Why can't you put everything on paper? I mean, not just for me, the whole, the whole city need to know what we're, what we're giving out. I just like, I could sign a blank check, so here you a blank check, and you had it back to me.
It would be that thick, that's why we didn't, but we'll get you a copy.
You can have my copy if you want it, Mr. Henry. I can't, it's so tiny, I can't read it anyway, so good luck. Try it, here, take it.
You can have it.
I'm serious, I'm gonna have to go online, I can't even see that, so look how little that is. You're gonna laugh when you see that.
No, I know, I know.
It's fine, thank you.
I know what you're saying, Mayor. I need you to get rid of folks when they come up questioning about someone, and know, the whole city want to know. Why you can show, you can give prices of one thing, you cannot give prices to another. Now, you running that clock. I done showed you many times, I'm not talking, you running that clock, some of y'all are talking. That clock's still going, my time is not yet, is not yet really up. Now, I notice it.
I'm sorry, okay?
Well, I'm just saying, we need, it's thing we need to correct. Thing we need to correct, Mayor. Somebody else is talking, and they don't quit talking, that clock need to quit. They don't need to continue to run.
Mayor, Commissioners, if I could help clear some of this up. The debris management contract you approved on item, item nine J, and that's the item with the spreadsheet that Commissioner Halagus? Yes. So all those have, have associated rates for drivers, trucks, all the staff that would be required for each one of those companies. Item nine K, which is before the board right now, that is based on volume that the debris hauler experiences. So the debris monitoring company, they, when they respond to the RFP, it's more of a, how qualified are they to operate a debris monitoring operation? There are prices included, but a lot of their prices are based on what our debris pickup contractor that you just approved would experience during that natural disaster. So it's all volume-based, so it's hard to predict what the monitoring agency is going to experience, if that makes sense.
I think it was a lot more simple than that. I think he was just saying it was principled, that if we could document when there's a number maybe on there per price unit, he, I assume that, it was just that simple.
I think the bottom line was he wanted the cost of the contract. There's no cost to the contract unless there's an event. Doesn't cost the city anything to have a contract unless there's an event.
Correct. And we didn't have one for eight years.
It's very simple.
And then we did. Okay, so.
Me, motion.
Motion, please.
I'd like to move approval.
Second?
Second motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Nine L is the consideration of approving a small utility easement for the AT&amp;T to use for an above-ground fiber optic cable junction cabinet. As background information, AT&amp;T is enhancing connectivity throughout the City of Panama City and has requested a small easement to facilitate a fiber optic junction cabinet needed for their downtown network. This easement is proposed on city-owned property between Jinx Avenue and Grace Avenue on Fifth Street with the dimensions of eight feet by seven feet as documented in Exhibit B of the attached easement agreement. If approved, this agenda item will authorize me as the city manager to sign this agreement to grant this easement to AT&amp;T for the sole purpose of locating this junction cabinet on a four-foot by five-foot concrete slab to be constructed by AT&amp;T at the location. With that, it's my recommendation we move forward in approval of this request to facilitate enhanced connectivity in the downtown area.
Motion on nine L.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
Your second?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Discussion, call roll.
I just had a quick question. So the, the Platte deesment's already closed, is that, was I reading that correctly? So there's not like a, there's not like an alley there?
There is still a recorded alley, but it's a city.
Okay. But there's nobody using it.
There's nobody using it.
That's what I was just making sure of.
Okay.
Call roll.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the following are the first readings of a number of ordinances for various properties within the City of Panama City. With that, item ten A is first reading of ordinance three zero five three point one, which is voluntary annexation of zero point four nine nine acres of a property located at two nine zero eight Tupelo Drive. As background information, applicant is requesting annexation into the city in order to utilize city services. The planning board reviewed this on its March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, recommendation is conduct the first reading of the annexation.
First reading of ordinance thirty fifty-three point one, voluntary annexation of point four nine nine acres. An ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of point four nine nine acres of unincorporated property located at twenty-nine oh eight Tupelo Drive, Bay County, Florida, into the city as further defined here and after amending the wards and boundaries of the city to include said land and providing for an effective date.
Item ten B is first reading of ordinance three zero five three point two, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for the property located at twenty-nine oh eight Tupelo Drive. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the annexation agenda request, and the recommendation is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty fifty-three point two, and ordinance amending comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for a parcel of property located at twenty-nine oh eight Tupelo Drive, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer severability and effective date.
Item ten C is first reading of ordinance three zero five three point three, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of residential one, R1, for the property located at two nine zero eight Tupelo Drive. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the agenda, annexation agenda request, and the recommendation is to move forward with the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty fifty-three point three, and ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at twenty-nine oh eight Tupelo Drive, Panama City, Florida, having approximately point four nine nine acres, R1, providing for severability and effective date.
Item ten D is first reading of ordinance three zero five four point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at eighteen seventeen Beck Avenue. As background information, the applicant has requested a land use and zoning change to develop townhomes, two units on the subject property. This item was reviewed by the planning board on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty fifty-four point one, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at eighteen seventeen Beck Avenue, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer severability and effective date.
Item ten E is first reading of ordinance three zero five four point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use three, MU three, for the property located at eighteen seventeen Beck Avenue. It's the same information as I shared earlier on the future land use amendment agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty fifty-four point two, and ordinance zoning parcels of property located at eighteen seventeen Beck Avenue, Panama City, Florida, having approximately point one three one acres, mixed use two, providing for severability and an effective date.
Item ten F is the first reading of ordinance three zero five five point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at four zero three and four zero five East Fourth Street. As background information, the applicant has requested a land use and zoning designation change to mixed use three, MU three, for this property, these properties. This item was reviewed by the planning board on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended denial unanimously. With that, it's recommendation that we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, may I interject for a minute? Because y'all need to be aware of what's going on here, and there could be somebody here to talk about it, I don't know. Okay, okay. Well, we should probably listen to them first, and then I'll make a comment.
You want to talk about it today, since you're here, come on up.
My name is Gary Boyett, I live four fifty-one Masalina Drive. I'm not a public speaker, but we, we had a good visit with the planning board, and you're all aware, and you just said it was unanimous. So, under the code of law and ordinances, the Planning and Zoning Board has studied and considered the need and justification for the change and the relationship with the proposed amendment resoning to the city's general planning program. Planning and Zoning Board redundancy, I can't emphasize enough that they were unanimous, and it didn't take all day. Would citizens agree and support decision of award, we are asking the Panama City Commission to deny rezoning application PB two two three six. And the reasons are many, and the clock is ticking. The infrastructure, you know, Masalina Drive, most of you do anyway, that it's, it's older Cove properties, and, and the infrastructure's bad enough already, and these folks want to put big condos, or they want to change the thing to, if. The roads are bad enough already, and this will only exacerbate the traffic alone. The short part of Masalina Drive on the north side of the bayou, you can't, the visibility, you could pull up here, and you, you can't even see it now, and that's with nothing on the property, and you have to ease out into the road, and it only gets, gonna get worse. They've been trying to get this changed so they could put townhouses, and if you change this ordinance, it opens it up to anything, and that's what we're trying to fight against Do the traffic considerations alone dictate denial of the petition? If you're ever there when, in the early morning, trying to get out on Fourth Street, the traffic is really bad there, but you have to ease and turn if you're coming back the same way on, when the courthouse is done, and that's only gonna get worse when the Fourth Street project starts. And that's, that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners and Mayor, Malena Weems, four two three Masalina Drive. We all know that our neighborhood is properly zoned. We've had workshops where the community came in, and we have a master comprehensive plan, a future use plan, that's all been adopted and approved by you guys. Changing that zoning from R1 to MU three would allow medium to high-density residential with a combination of commercial, office, and educational use for private profit, profit, which is certainly a negative impact on our traffic, our sewer, our solid waste, our potable water, the elements and the quality of life for those of us who live in the Cove and love the Cove. The additional runoff from the impervious surfaces that are gonna be produced will add toxicity to our waterfront. The waterfront impacted by the increase of the density along Masalina Bayou would further tax that lift station, which already dumps unacceptable amounts into our bayou. This land certainly has a vital use in the future. As our comprehensive plan has language, it provides for maintaining and providing sufficient parks, open space, recreational facilities that are gonna meet our residents and our visitors' needs. This land could serve as a very high valuable open space, and it also provides a security buffer for our courthouse, city hall, the civic center, the bustling Panama City. We have our parades down there, events, festivals that already create a lot of traffic coming in and out of there. Two blocks away is a fire station. It's noted on their application that the fire flow is not supported. They do not have adequate water should they have a fire on that property and rezone it as M three U. Single-family or an open space would be anything, the only thing that would be acceptable there. Our master plan also boasts this huge overwhelming desire for homeownership. This is something that's gonna be rentals only, it's not producing homeownership in the Cove. Single-family residential or open space, this zoning would rob us of any possible use of this land being used for the community. Introducing M three, MU three into that neighborhood of the Cove is just unacceptable. The Planning and Zoning Board has requests, has agreed that the need and justification is not present, and they forwarded their recommendation that is unanimously denied. The citizens of Panama City and I support that decision and ask that you do too. PB two two three six, denial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, Devon, would you read?
First reading.
I wanted to, I wanted to address kind of what they were saying. I have met with the developer, and he also is concerned about them, and sent me your information to talk to before anybody makes a decision, and he's willing and would like to sit down as well. He has agreed that, he didn't really care about MU three, that was a recommendation given to him. He's willing to do R two. So right now, if you look at it, it's, it's with, and this doesn't mean he's right, or you're not, or whatever, I just want to start the dialogue of getting it out there. Currently, if anybody is familiar with Cove, which I know the mayor for sure is, but it is, this piece of property is constantly a nuisance to the city. It's been diminishing, I'm sure, your property values. It is a, it is constant, it's under code enforcement right now, I mean, it's constantly a nuisance to the city. It currently had a house, a single-family house, and then in addition on the other property, it already has four units. Okay, so I don't want you to think it's just a, it was always just a single family, and these four units, and God forbid if somebody's here that lives in them, I'm really sorry, but they are not suitable to live in. So it's, I, I just want to paint the picture for, sorry if that was somebody who's here, okay? But I want to paint the picture that this is, this has had five units on it. The two, the two parcels have had five units, not five units, maybe I would assume that the neighbors think is desirable, or I do. I think the planning board, when it came there, there was no other option but the MU three, and MU three is too, is too much for this parcel. And, and like I said, the developer is, is fine with R two. R two, for conversation over the next two weeks, would allow eight total units and not twenty or fourteen or whatever the other stuff was. So from five to eight. Now, I will say, it does kind of concern me that, at first I've heard that the area does not support fire flow. It says for mixed-use zoning, we need to make sure that that doesn't apply to R two, if that's also R two. I'm not even sure what somebody can do with the property. Like she said, it's very valuable, it is a private, privately-owned parcel, so we can't turn it into a park or something like that unless we purchased it, which I know we're not, we're not in the business of doing. But, but what I do want, and I know, I can only assume what they want, is something that's not diminishing property values, that is not too big. That makes, that makes, that makes sense there. A couple of things she mentioned, I mean, they mentioned was the traffic. I think if it's R two instead of MU three, that would be a much better compromise. The visibility, I think we could put onto the developer to make sure that however it's set back or how the landscaping is, that it's easier to see coming out of there, especially when that property's been a nuisance, it is very difficult to, to go past that. And the stormwater, everybody's worried about the bay, that's why we're doing the stormwater cells downtown, and we're doing all that, trying to do that protection. But that's also on the developer to do the proper development and stormwater runoff. I did a little bit of research on you guys, and I think you're a realtor of some sort, aren't you? Do you do that, yeah? So, I think that, I think there's, I think that's really more what it is. I know that the developer doesn't live local, but he is here. And I know that he, I mean, he's more than like happy and welcome to sit down and say, hey, what works for y'all, what would make sense, you know, what makes, how can we compromise and work together? And we rarely see that, by the way. So, just, there's no vote today, it's, you know, and I'm gonna give you all my contact info, and we'll, we'll work through that, but I just want to give y'all a little bit of where we've tried to go and what we're trying to work on. And it would be an incredible piece to be developed down Fourth Street. That side of the Cove is really starting to thrive, and, you know, if it's done right, I think it could be good. The only other thing is, I was under the understanding that these would be for sale and not for rent. But, I mean, we can't vote because of that, but I, I will check on that, but, so that's it, that's all I got for you.
Thank you for that information personally, I appreciate that, Jenna.
Put it together and put one house?
Well, it's not worth it for, if some one person did, but, I mean, it's, the other unit, by the way, the other parcel is zone multifamily. So, you can't, I mean, unless somebody just wanted to do that, and there's some restrictions of people, you know, the getting under the little bridge, and that's a whole nother issue, but, but anyway.
First reading, ordinance thirty fifty five point one. An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at four oh three and four oh five East Fourth Street, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer severability and providing for an effective date.
With that, item ten G is first reading of ordinance three zero five five point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use three, MU three, for the property located at four oh three and four oh five East Fourth Street. It's the same information as I shared earlier in the future land use amendment agenda requests with the planning board recommending unanimously denial. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty fifty five point two. An ordinance zoning parcels of property located at four oh three and four oh five East Fourth Street, Panama City, Florida, having approximately point six eight acres, mixed use three, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item ten H is the first reading of ordinance three zero five six point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at East Eleventh Street, parcel ID number one six four five four dash two two zero dash zero one zero. As background information, the applicant has requested a land use and zoning change to the mixed-use land use category and mixed-use two zoning district. This item was reviewed by the planning board on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended denial unanimously with one abstention. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of ordinance thirty fifty six.
Hold on a second, we have somebody who wants to plug on this one too.
Yes.
Good morning, my name is Michael Mitchell, thirteen oh one Caldwell Drive. I'm born and raised here in Panama City, Florida. I've had this property here for fourteen years and paid taxes on it every year. I've owned it, and I finally come to a point where I'm ready to do something with my investment. And right there in the city, right there in the neighborhood, there's nothing going on right there but housing, and that's what I'm trying to add to the city, more housing. I'm trying to add either a triplex or a couple of single-family homes. I was in contact with direct developer Mike Lane, who helped me through this process, and I did everything by protocol, all the proper paperwork. I don't understand what the denial was about because it's commercial, and honestly, nobody wants a business right beside their home. Directly beside it and behind it is nothing but homes. And a rundown car wash that needs to be demolished, in my opinion. I just want to go ahead and put some housing to help, you know, further the community, because I know that it's desperate needs of home here in Panama City. And I would just ask you please all to, you know, reconsider this here before you deny it, because, like I said, I, I put a lot into this here, and I'm ready to, you know, make a return on my investment if possible, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got another, Mr. Mayor.
And it didn't say why I got it denied.
My name is Frederick Mosley, live at eight oh seven West Street. I own the raggedy car wash that he's talking about. And it got ragged due to the hurricane, but we're rebuilding it right now. So, yes, it is his own business right now, it's just state business. Because in the next few months, my business is gonna open up, and you're gonna have people playing music and whatever else over there. And I can see that it'd be a problem with the new neighbors there calling the police and having the police coming out there on a regular basis, because I got a twenty-four-hour business, it's gonna be from twenty-four hours, it's not no nine to five. So, I also talked to the contractor too, that's interested in buying it, his property, and I think there's three partials can be put on there. I don't know if it's gonna be rental or whatever, but their business is gonna mess my business up. I've been there thirty years, so I've been paying taxes thirty years, not fourteen, okay? Anyway, I think it should not be there.
I'm a little bit confused, help me out here, okay, where exactly?
I'm parallel, I'm on Eleventh Street, right beside it.
Right beside it.
The property that you're doing.
Oh, yeah, right, right up the street.
Yes, Eleventh Street.
I'm pointing the wrong way, but I know where it's at, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all got that now? Yep, okay.
Okay, this is first reading only. Ordinance thirty fifty six point one. An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at East Eleventh Street, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer severability and effective date.
Item I, ten I is the first reading of ordinance three zero five six point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use two, MU two, for the property located at East Eleventh Street, parcel ID number one six four five four dash two two zero dash zero one zero. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the future land use amendment agenda request, and with that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty fifty six point two. An ordinance zoning parcels of property located at East Eleventh Street, Panama City, Florida, having approximately point three oh seven acres, mixed use two, providing for severability and effective date.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Go ahead.
Why is there not a fiscal address with that, it just says on Eleventh Street? Or am I missing something? Help me out. It didn't make sense to me.
Sorry, it was previously stated in the prior agenda request, it's a follow-on.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It was prior stated in the previous agenda quest, request, it was a follow-on item?
But it does not have a specific, it does not have a specific address.
What, what is it, you know, we want to process those? Twenty-two fifty, thank you. That's the car wash, okay. But that's not the address of what this is. It should have a number on it, should have a.
No, no.
It's not, oh, I got you, it just has, it's just a parcel number, I'm sorry.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, thank you, got you, I got you, thank you.
We'll start the next meeting in ten minutes.